Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, December 5th, 2011, and City Council this evening is going to be meeting in a public hearing, and then at 7:30, a regular session of council. The public hearing is a 2012 federal transit operating grant, EnterCity and GoBus. And a public hearing is simply that. We hope we have members of the public that have input and comments to make. But why don't we start with the mayor and Carolyn Conley from HAPCAP to explain a little bit about the grant and how things are going. GoBus is going great.
Yes, that it is.
I'll let Carolyn do most of the talking there. Again, this is a required public hearing for our grants.
Yes.
And change without changes.
Well, thank you for having me. On September 23rd, Hawking Athens Perry Community Action submitted an application to the Ohio Department of Transportation for an operating grant under the 59 U.S.C. Section 5311 for federal transit laws and Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program. What this grant will do is it will provide assistance to GoBuses for calendar year 2012, and the budget has been submitted for state approval. The regulation, like as you'd stated, requires us to hold a public hearing, so that's why we're here, and we hope that there's input from the public, any comments, questions, We submitted two budgets, one to maintain things as they are now, which is operating from Athens to Columbus and Athens to Cincinnati twice a day. We also submitted a second budget, which includes those two routes, and then a third route, which will go from Athens to Marietta once a day. The two budgets we submitted, for just the two routes, was $1,644,180 of federal funds from the Federal Transit Administration. And then how this program works is Greyhound will match that 50%, so there will be an equal match from Greyhound. For the Columbus, Cincinnati, and Marietta route, we applied for $1,869,784 of federal funds, and again, with the Greyhound match. Currently, it looks like we are going to get approval for the Marietta route. We've got an unofficial thumbs up, we're waiting for the final documentation. Once that happens, we will start it in early 2012, we don't have a set date yet. There are three proposed stops. We'll leave from Athens, we will go to Coolville, Belgrade, and then Marietta. Some of the good things about this route is it's that many more rural people that will have access to Athens and to the urban centers, Cincinnati and Columbus, but in reverse, people from Athens and other rural communities to the east, or I'm sorry, excuse me, to the west, will have access to transportation that runs up and down I-77. Lakefront Lines is one of the transportation providers that go up and down that interstate. So there's connections to Parkersburg, West Virginia, Charleston, West Virginia, Akron, Cleveland, and a variety of other cities up and down that interstate. We're still in the works of figuring out the exact schedule, but we hope to have that put into motion in early 2012. So at that time-
Again, we're here primarily to hear from the public, so if there is anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this, or any comments or suggestions, we'd sure like to hear from you.
And I guess I should say I do have some copies of the budget that we submitted to the state. If anyone wanted a copy or wanted to glance at it, just let me know.
And for the record, anybody, this is a public hearing, so anybody who hasn't signed in the signing sheet as a public, please do so. It's a requirement. And again, this bus system has, it's been taking off quite nicely. It's added, as I say, communication connectivity with the rest of the world, and I'm glad that we can actually participate and be part of it.
OU students coming and going from Cleveland, what's presently there other than this? Is there much bus? When I was an OU student, I rode the bus back and forth to Cleveland, you know, to start school and at every one of the holiday breaks. Would this be the only available?
As far as bus lines, yes. You can either, currently, you can go from Athens to Columbus, catch Lakefront Lines, and go up to Cleveland. What going to Marietta will do, it kind of adds just more times. The timing, how long you're actually on the bus is about the same, but it just adds more times and more availability.
Sure.
It allows you to connect to it. I was only impressed that the university did have some shuttles at the start of the school year, so if you're talking about trying to move a student in, I thought there was that, they have a system somewhere in their, you know, in their enrollment or how they get students to it. But as terms of a regular bus line, this is pretty much it. I know when I was going to school in Marietta, there was a, Greyhound was there, and it's no longer there.
Yeah.
And the same here. So, you know, there are, this actually, we're, it's having a comeback, so to speak, because now you can get easily from one place to the other. So it works out.
And even if you do go, you know, take GoBus to Columbus and then Columbus to Cleveland, it's still under $40. I'm not exactly sure what the exact cost is, but one way is under $40, I believe.
Ten of which is just between here and Columbus.
Right, exactly.
That's the cheap part.
Right.
And Cincinnati.
Yeah.
Do you have any expectation of that changing? Or I know there was a conversation a while back that this would be, at the start, it was an introductory price, and now it sounds like it's just been extended and there's no end date, as far as I know.
Correct. We don't see any end date right now. I mean, the way we're looking at it, as well as the state, is, you know, those buses are running regardless of how many people are on them. So if we can have, you know, 45, 50 people on a bus at $10 a ticket, as opposed to $4, or I'm sorry, excuse me, four people on the bus at $35 a ticket, you know, you're definitely winning out at the $10 price.
And the ridership has been phenomenal, hasn't it?
It absolutely has. We just had our one-year anniversary, October 31st. We had over 26,000 passengers, 26,404 passengers in the first year, so.
And for people that would say that people do not want mass transit, you know, it just lies on the face of it, are there many times that passengers are refused? Are the buses ever maxed out?
There has been times. Luckily, there, there have been few. There are occasions, particularly because we have so many ways of purchasing tickets. You can buy them online in advance, you can buy them at a ticketing location, or you can purchase them with cash as you board the bus. And it's been mostly people who are hoping to get on the bus, you know, have $10 in their hand, and there's just not enough seats, and we have no way of predicting, you know, how many people will be standing there waiting. So we're trying to come up with ways to accommodate people. And on Fridays, leaving the Ohio University stop, we've had seven buses there. You know, three of the GoBuses, four which we get from Lakefront, and four of them going to Columbus, three of them are going to Cincinnati, and they have been pretty much full, all seven.
So that's what, 55 people per bus?
Um, the three GoBuses seat 50, the Lakefront Buses seat 54, so.
Idea of the numbers. And again, you're saying there's a trend for more online ticketing.
Yeah, we've been trying to really encourage people to buy tickets online. This way, we have a, you know, we know how many buses to send, we know when to say we're sold out. But there's, it's kind of a problem with all transit systems, it seems, that it's a little bit unpredictable, and we do the best we can. And so far, we've, we've done a very good job of getting all the people where they need to be.
Member Butler.
Thank you. So, correct me if I'm wrong, was there more interest during the holiday, or near the holidays, and so because of purchase of tickets, then more bus services were provided? Is that correct?
Yeah, we-
So demand necessitated more buses?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, in conjunctions with holidays and Fridays and Sundays, we just assume, particularly when school is in session, that those are going to be our busy days, and we always at least have one or two extra buses scheduled.
Thank you.
In a case like that, would only the GoBuses have the wireless?
Actually, all of Lakefront Buses have the wireless. Now, not all of the Lakefront Buses have outlets at every seat, but they are still very nice buses.
Not as pretty as ours, though.
Yeah, that is true. That is very much true.
Yes, member Nysli.
And as I understand, it's not, it's a great aid for students, but there are a lot of community members that are riding the bus also.
Yeah.
So it's providing access to healthcare, connections in Columbus.
Correct.
Okay.
And we don't have, we don't collect that information as people board the bus, we don't ask if they're students or their age or anything like that. However, just based on our off-seasons, over the summer, our numbers never fell below 1,200. So, you know, it's not, students at that point may be a handful, but you can comfortably say that the community members are taking advantage, and we'll see what this winter bring, a winter break brings as well.
Do you have any idea how many are making airport connections?
It's hard to say. I have figures on how many people get dropped off and are picked up at the airport. I do know that some people use it just as a general stop, so you can't say with 100% confidence.
Right.
But if that was a number you were interested in, I can-
Anecdotally, I just find it interesting of that, if the two different runs are at hours that is facilitating people being able to make it to the airport without leaving a car for a week at $110 and all the stuff that goes with that, you know?
The timing is actually, of our system, is to have interconnectivity with the Greyhound lines and the rest of the country, much more of that than trying to connect with the airport. Anecdotally, I've talked to some people who actually, they're, they go out to visit their kin, and mostly they're kids, and the kids pick them up at the airport because that's an easy place to drive in, drive out, and do a meet. So they're not going to airport for flying out, they're going to visit family up there, and it's like, it's an easier place to get in and out than the bus terminal, I believe, is what they're saying. I know there was some discussion about changing the timing of some of the routes to make it a day trip. Is that still in the works, or that's not?
It's still in the works. We approached the state with the Marietta route and the day trip to Columbus at the same time. We haven't heard much about, back about the day trip to Columbus, so we figured, let's move forward with Marietta, get that under our belts, get that moving, and then we're going to try to approach them again in the future, because I do think that would be an asset for our community members.
Member Sands.
You've used the name Lakefront Buses and Greyhound, both. Are they, are they the same entity? Are they both working with us? I'm not sure.
They're both partners. Lakefront Lines actually is our, the operators of GoBus. We have contracted with them to work with us on the schedule. They maintain the buses, they hire the drivers. They also, they do a variety of things, bus-related, but they do similar service to what Greyhound does, you know, city to city. So they are a partner, and then Greyhound is a partner as well. Not only do we make connections with Greyhounds at the Greyhound station, they also provide 50% of an in-kind match to make, to make this project 100% reimbursable for costs.
Thank you.
No one else wishes to speak to this? Well, yes, Mayor Wild.
One more thing. One of the reasons, if you look at the ordinance, which is 12411, which will be on the second meeting, I believe this, or maybe third meeting this afternoon.
Yes.
Part of the thing is that because we've had such success with HAPCAP and working, administering the GoBus, we are, this is part of the package to actually have them administer our inter, our city bus, public transit, Athens Transit System, just because what we do is, in my office, I mean, it's coordination of Charlene, myself, the McDonald's Transport Company, and Chris Nysli to pay attention to a lot of this, how well we're doing. I think we need a better oversight administration of our public transit, and that's why you're putting in there. And I, it's not part of the public hearing right now, but I just want to make you aware that we will be working more with HAPCAP as time goes on, and hope to improve our city bus system as well. And that's why that's in there, just to go off topic, so to speak, but if there's anything you want to bring up at that, this point, I hate to blindside you on that, but the fact is, I think we're working quite well with the GoBus, and I think we can mirror it with the public transit, city transit.
Other comments for the mayor regarding that? Well, congratulations on what has to be a great startup and an incredible community asset, and frankly, I remember when it was first brought to this council, I didn't think it had much of a chance of succeeding, which just continues my stellar opinion of what really the company needs, our community needs and wants and supports.
Well, we're happy-
I didn't think we were big enough for Walmart, I remember saying that, and that seems to have worked out, too, so.
Part of the thing is becoming a regional point of contact. I mean, again, we have, you know, if you look at the makeup, I talk to people, anecdotally, about how they don't want to ride up, they don't like enjoy driving, they don't want vehicles that will make it to Columbus or Cincinnati, to tell you the truth, and they'd rather get on a bus, and they'd rather not have to deal with the traffic, you know?
Well, and these buses are phenomenally comfortable. When you look at those seats, they're better than anything you see on an airplane in first class.
Yeah.
And, you know, with the idea of being able to surf the web along the way, I can't imagine a better way to go to Columbus and back or anywhere else for that matter.
I'm told most of the students sleep rather than surf the web, but I may be wrong in that, okay?
Yeah, that sounds good to me. I'd sleep all day.
Well, again, congratulations on what appears to be a job well done.
Well, thank you.
Is there anyone else at all wishing to speak? Seeing none and having about 15 minutes before our regular session of council, this public hearing is adjourned. Welcome back to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, December 5th, 2011. It's on or about 7:30, and City Council is now meeting in regular session. We do have a forum with all members of council present. Under Communications, I do have one item, and it's from the Department of Liquor Control, reminding us, the purpose of this letter is to notify you that all permits to sell alcoholic beverages in your political subdivision will expire on February 1st, 2012, so there will be no more liquor sold. And in order to maintain permit privileges, every permissioner must file a renewal application. It is possible for us to raise objections, but as we have learned in the past, for any to be successful, you have to have an extremely good reason. So if anyone would like to get to the clerk of council, Debbie Walker, and your personal cellphone number, so anyway, you're welcome to call in and talk to Debbie, and she'll be nice.
She is.
She does. She doesn't talk enough on the phone. Are there any other communications anyone else wishes to share? Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wild.
I have nothing to add.
Oh, you're kidding. Well, we see our treasurer here, Mary Ann McClure. Is there anything you'd like to talk about?
No reports, so I'll wait for this to come up on the agenda.
Okay. How about Law Director, Patrick Lang?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a couple of issues I'd like to address this evening. First being oil and gas regulation, which has been a conversation that's been going on in the city and on this council now for some number of weeks, and I'd like to just start by saying that how much I just want to thank the council for raising public awareness of this issue and for the leadership that they've displayed in trying to find things that the city can do to protect our environment and our water supply. That said, I was asked by Member Sands to briefly speak to this issue in light of some of the comments or things that appeared in the newspaper this week. I think there may be a little confusion about what the city can and can't do in this area. Now, I've been involved in some meetings behind the scenes, and I've met with certain members on an individual basis to talk about some of this. I generally don't like to give, you know, public statements about areas of the law when it's possible to just do it behind the scenes as legislation is getting crafted. However, I do think that, again, in light of some of the comments that were made in the paper, that I do need to address this issue directly. And most importantly, is just to make clear that the city does not have the authority to act beyond its city boundaries. And so there was some talk about a three-mile zone, and that is something that we just simply don't have the authority to address, and I wanted to make that clear because, again, there were some comments in the paper which may have added to some confusion in that area. And then also, I've provided, I think most members already had had this, but just in case, I did circulate a copy of the Ohio Revised Code, Section 1509.02, which was passed, I believe in 2004 initially, and has been amended since then. And I'll just read a small excerpt there from the law, states that "The Division of Oil and Gas Resources Management has the sole and exclusive authority in the regulating, to regulate the permitting, location, and spacing of oil and gas wells and production operations within the state." Goes on to say that "The regulation of oil and gas activities is a matter of general statewide interest that requires uniform statewide regulations, and this chapter and rules adopted under constitute a comprehensive plan with respect to all aspects of the locating, drilling, well stimulation, completing, and operating of oil and gas wells within the state, including site construction and restoration permitted, related to those activities, and the disposal of waste from those wells." So that is not to say that there's nothing that council can do in this area, and I certainly would encourage council to continue to raise awareness of this issue and to seek out innovative solutions to some of the problems that we face in our city, but I did feel that it was necessary to address that point directly and on the public record. The other issue I'd like to address is another one that's been covered pretty well in the media here, that's the latest, latest incident or the latest ruling in the Three White Entertainment case. As you may know, the judge ruled this week that the Board of Zoning Appeals had acted improperly in denying the permit for that establishment. And what I'd like to clarify, just to make sure that we're all clear, is that there are two separate issues now in this case that we are dealing with. Number one, we have the issue of the constitutionality of the zoning code as it existed in 2007, and that issue is now being dealt with in a federal court case, so that is not the case that we are dealing with here this week. The case that we're dealing with this week is limited to the narrow issue of whether or not the BZA acted properly in their application of that zoning code in this particular instance. And so we're not dealing with constitutional issues in this case, and yet it's much more narrow than that. So the city has 30 days to decide whether to file an appeal in that case. I've not yet had the opportunity to meet with the members of the Board of Zoning Appeals, although I will be attending their next meeting. And I just do want to make this clear that, you know, the city is as frustrated as anybody in how long that this, how long this has been dragging out, how long the litigation process has taken, but at the same time, I want to make clear that the city has legal rights. If the Board of Zoning Appeals should choose to take this case on an appeal to the 4th District, that is a right that the city has, and we will not be shy about exercising our rights under the law in the city. So that's where we're at on that case, and I think that more than taken up the mayor's time that he didn't use tonight, so I will go ahead and, I think that's everything I need to go over.
Questions or comments for the Law Director? Yes.
I think that when we are looking at fracking and access to city lands and such, that there may be ORC codes and such, but they're always up to be challenged. And we're in a new era with certain types of development, certain types of insult to city resources, to the health and safety of the public in the city, and that is our responsibility as City Council to look at. So I don't think that because there's an ORC title that addresses this necessarily negates us to be able to go forward, to look at this process. I mean, you look at the issue three that was just passed by not very many people in Ohio, and it said, "We don't need to pay attention to the federal law when it comes to the healthcare mandates." So, you know, that will be gone through the courts, that will be tested by the courts. And so I think that it behooves the City Council to look at the health, safety, and future sustainability of the public and the citizens of Athens when it comes to this. And so I respect what you're saying, and that makes total sense because you are somebody who knows the law, but I think that we need to look at the future when it comes to this. And there's, you know, I think that issue three is a perfect example. The state doesn't need to ma, pay attention to federal law. Gosh, why do we need to pay attention to state law?
I very much appreciate your comments on that, Member Fall, and certainly have a great deal of respect and a passion to the leadership that you've brought to this issue, but I, this is a general statement, I would hope that all of us as elected officials can, even if we can't agree on everything, and regardless of how we feel about, you know, the state laws that we're bound by, I would hope that we can all at least agree to the principle that, you know, that we are subject to the rule of law and that we must act within, we should all agree that we have to follow the laws as they're written, and if there is opportunities, as you said, to possibly, you know, challenge law, and that's certainly something that we can take a look at, but I hope we can at least all agree that, you know, on the starting point, that we are, we need to uphold the laws that we have taken an oath to uphold.
Member Sands.
No, I was, no.
Oh, I thought, oh, you're a fan.
You did, but I-
Changed your mind. Is there other people wishing to comment? Thank you, Law Director. Onto ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 1211 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of chlorine, fluoride, salt, caustic soda, and sulfur dioxide, and declaring an emergency. Member Bain.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 1211.
Second.
1211 is a routine purchase that we make for the agents we need for our wastewater plants in other areas. Chlorine, fluoride, salt, caustic soda, sulfur dioxide, those are the things, and the amount of money is pretty amazing. It's increased a little bit over time, and I'm sure it will increase in the future.
Other comments? All those in favor of the ordinance? Oh, I'm sorry, Member Fall.
I'd like, I'd like to say that in the future, with the wastewater treatment upgrades that we want to do, the chlorine will be reduced. I mean, there will be reduction of purchase of some of these caustic horrible, I love caustic soda. I mean, I think that that's just a great name.
That one's a lot.
But there'll be a reduction in, in the purchase of chemicals in the future.
As will, sulfur dioxide will also go because that's what we use to strip out the chlorine.
Very good.
So, yeah, 20, and we'll have to spend money on bulbs, so it's probably a wash.
So there you are.
No, I agree.
I agree.
Which is more caustic?
No, no, I agree, I agree. That's why we did it. Remember, we all, we're all on that page together.
Is there other comments? All in favor of ordinance 120?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 121 is an ordinance amending ordinance 03211, authorizing a contract extension of the city's third-party health insurance administrator. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 12111.
Second.
This ordinance does just as it says, it authorizes a contract extension for the, for the city's third-party health insurance administrator, and this action needs to be taken by December 31st, no, 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 until, this goes, runs until December 31st, 2014. This is a person who is, whose, whose job is, is defined by seven contract controls that the city has, has put into place, and this is a person who, whom we have, this is a position which we have contracted with in the, in the past to administer our health insurance program for our employees. I'm sorry.
That's fine. Other comments? All those in favor of ordinance 12111?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 12211 is an ordinance authorizing a contract by the third-party administrator for the city's prescription drug plan and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Sands.
Again, Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 12211.
Second.
This ordinance does need to begin by January 1st, 2012, and this is, again, another contract administrator that we need, that we utilize to follow the city's prescription drug plan, which is an integral part of our health plan.
Further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 122 has been adopted. Ordinance 12411- Ordinance 12411 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Hawking Athens Perry Community Action, HAPCAP, as the designated grant fee to administrator Athens Public Transit and declaring an emergency. Member Nicely.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 12411.
Second.
And this, as described, allows the mayor to enter into an agreement with Hawking Athens Perry Community Action Program for the running of our Athens public transit. You may recall that this follows a request for qualifications that the city issued this summer, soliciting organizations to apply to work with us to manage Athens Transit. The organization that's been selected, HAPCAP, runs the Go Bus, which we had, otherwise known as the intercity transit, which we had a public hearing for at 7:00 this evening. They also run the Mobility Manager Program, a federal grant that we are in partnership with HAPCAP on, as well as running the Logan Transit, so they clearly have a level of expertise and an interest in working with us to make the Athens Transit more efficient.
Other comments, all those in favor of adoption of ordinance 12411?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. We move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 12511 is an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Athens, Ohio during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2012. Member Sands?
Mr. President, this ordinance introduces the budget for the next year, which begins in January 1st of 2012 and runs through the 31st of December, 2012. A lot of the work was done by the mayor and the service safety director. Would they have some, anything they'd like to say at this point?
With a lot of help from the auditor's office, as well as members of council. It's collaboration. Let's see, the general fund is going to be running at 11.9 million total. If you notice, there's nothing in the capital 500, TC 500 classes, if you look at that. You will notice, of course, that the, the way it's spread out, of course, is that you have percent total of the general fund represented on the right-hand column, which would tell you that the police are covering almost 29.5% of the general fund budget. Fire is about 20.8%. Further down, you look at the bottom level where it talks about percentage of total, 79.42% of the budget is personnel, TC 100s. The rest of the funding is tourism, transportation, cable, streets, the total, grand total being about $33.6 million. We just added a lot of, it bumped up, I think last time we discussed this in committee, we were at 29, but we've added the funding that's required for the Oxbow Bridge next year. We got the numbers on that, that you'll find in the, let's see, it would be in small cities, the small cities ODOT grant, about 3.6, 3.1 million is right there. We also had, that would be the 589 fund. Streets is going to have a little bit of it, about 19,000, and I think the next lion's share would be in the street, we have 572, about 644,000. So we have, we have quite a bit of money invested in our next large infrastructure projects. So that gives us an idea of what's going on. The big change, of course, is that last year we had about $1.5 million of buses that we purchased, the Go Bus, that is, of course, taken out of the budget at this point. I don't know what else I'd want to add on it. We, it's as solid as we can get it. It'd be nice if we had more, but it's always a question of resources.
Comments on the budget?
You have it here?
Yes, Member Cosney.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing that popped out of me was the capital outlay for streets went from 150,000 down to 19,500.
Part of the rationale on that is we've had discussions about putting money in whenever we need to for projects, so the appropriation, realize that the process for many streets comes into, it either goes into street fund or street rehab. What Andy has been discussing most of the time is that when we're going to start large projects, rather than do the appropriation and then the authorization consecutively, is rather do them at the same time. That, because occasionally we've run into that problem where we've authorized it, but we haven't appropriated, or vice versa. So philosophically, we've had this discussion, maybe we should wait till we have the projects put in and then go from there. So I left it, I left it pretty much on the low end. We could amend that if you think that needs to be done.
No, I was just curious if there's, what the reason was. And then along with that, I guess it's capital improvements, fund 580.
Mm-hmm.
We jumped up to 500,000 from, I think, 100,000 on the last draft that I saw.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. If I had my computer, I could tell you what the commentary was on it, but there is a...
Borrowed money for the player.
Oh, yeah, that's, yes.
That makes sense.
So that, yeah, we have to pay off the rest of that, so that's in the mix.
So it's 100,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that, it's been so many little, so many numbers.
Even though that's borrowed, no.
Well, it is borrowed, but it's part of the, I know you borrow, it becomes part of the resources, so it's a mix.
Other comments. Ordinance 12611 is an ordinance authorizing staffing levels, a non-union pay scale, and slotting for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2012, repealing all ordinance inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Sands?
I'm going to ask Member Bain to comment on that.
You don't do that, and I don't really know all these things. I knew some of the others better than I do this one. All right, 126, I'll try it, and then you can go from there. One of the things that we have done is renamed the human resource slot from a personnel director. We've renamed the deputy safety service director from an assistant safety service director, and I assume that there will be eventually some change in remuneration with that particular change. The mayor has moved one of his intern spots into general secretary's slot, 1.5. The next one is a former intern that's now a government channel technician, I believe, yes. Okay, 1.5 there, half-time. And other than that, let's see if there's any, okay, the deputy of service safety director has multiple posts where he's funded. One of the things that we are also doing is we are hoping, on the last page if you see, deleting a master mechanic position and taking it down to two from three. And that is something that may need to be addressed in the future, but maybe with careful management and organization, we can go back to two. There are some things that I found out during the process about snow plowing and such, but those are things that will be seen. We have increased the total FTE, as they call it, to 1.67.6. Did I miss anything, Debbie? No, we deleted, I'll go to the intern seasonal page, we've added the number of council aides to two, is sort of as needed. In the past, they would just expend it as needed, and then up to a certain level, but now it's, there's an absolute number there. And the interns in the mayor's office have been reduced to one. My understanding was, and I thought it was a good idea, that the personnel director was going to add a part-time person, and that is what's going to go on in this particular, eventually, and we'll all be asked to do it, I think, as time goes on. Continuing on, when we get to the non-union pay scale, and we have granted an increase, right? We've increased the, was that the next one from the next ordinance?
No, please. Looking, oh.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Did you, did we actually delete those two areas in the non-union? All right, continuing on, stumbling as I will, we did increase some, the non-union across the board. We did something else that was probably pretty amazing. One source of inequity that I felt I really wanted to deal with before it's over is something called longevity pay. It seemed like a good idea 30 years ago, but right now we're not growing at a rate of 6%, which was the upper limit. The idea was that we would have a salary increase as you move through the steps, and when you reach a certain point, and then at that point, you would be rewarded with longevity pay. Well, we ceased doing that about a decade ago, but there are still people in this system. And so we agreed to putting the money into the base of the individuals, and that means there'll be no penalty for them over time, that the, that the longevity pay will be given out every paycheck, and there's no more Christmas club going on. I think it's probably, being a capitalist at heart, I would rather have it over the time period, and I know other people disagree with me, but from the point of view of management, having it thrown in at the end is not a great idea. So in the non-union then, we no longer have longevity, and we hope that we eliminate it in other areas too, although no one has taken a good on this. Salary increases, 1% for the people who are maxed out, more for those in the middle who don't have longevity than the actual amounts are shown. We have a non-union pay scale that is difficult sometimes to understand. If you go into OU environment, you'll understand it a little bit, because I think that's where it was borrowed from, but fundamentally, you have steps up to the midpoint, and then you're supposed to have evaluation, and then we're supposed to divide up a pool, and it just has some happening. That doesn't mean we need to spend $20,000 or $30,000 on a new study, but it does mean that probably, and I think the personnel director is well-versed and able to do this, maybe in the future you'll say, "We've got 3% of the salaries, you can apportion it according to merit," or something on that order, "or you can do what you jolly well, please." That's what, but that was what it was intended to be, and there was, there is quite, there was quite a bit of discrepancy, I'm sure nobody is happy, but everybody got an increase, and that would be better than a lot of people in Southern Ohio. And you can see the new position, the part-time steps, council part-time step one, and IT technician, internal service fund, part-time, we have three new half-time positions, and we lost one, as you know, in the master mechanic. So that's basically it. Those of you who follow these things, you can see that we have a number of management or appointed officials. I have a list of several of these that I think are too low, not that it matters, but I talked to Chris about it a little bit, I think they need to. Some, there needs to be some, some adjustment, but maybe it won't be right away. But I know that's contrary to what some people say in public, but I think everybody has worked really hard this last year. We can say without a doubt that our people have produced savings that we can counter, and we couldn't not give them a salary increase. This is a good year, next year is anybody's guess. Jim, you want to add?
I just wanted to say that the position that we're down in master mechanics is because of retirement again. We have, we have not eliminated a person's position, this was an opening caused by retirement.
Member Butler?
Thank you. Regarding the master mechanic position too, I think it's something we probably will likely want to keep our eyes on, whether we eventually will need that third position or not. Obviously, doing work in-house is cheaper than having to send something out to another mechanic's office or whatnot, to a garage, rather. So something we'll need to keep our eyes on, input from Andy Stone.
Number Foll?
I'd also like to talk about the mechanics. When you eliminate a position, you're also asking all the other people to work that much harder, and I think that people recognize that in Athens, we keep our cars and our trucks and our fire engines and everything else for a really long time. I mean, we really tried to get a really long period of time out of these vehicles and equipment, and so I'd like to just say that, and this, I don't think this is said enough when people eliminate positions, and I realize that this is a retirement, but across the board, across the state, when you eliminate positions, you're also putting more pressure on all those other people. And we require a huge amount of pressure because Athens, I think, is really good about having trucks for 25 years and, you know, vehicles for 20 years, and, you know, when we release them, people don't want them because they're all kind of worn out, and we use them really, really well, and that takes mechanics to upkeep them. And so I think that it's really important to recognize that.
Other comments on ordinance 126? Member Bain?
I think it's a, it's a situation that you can certainly monitor. I think you would be wise to take a look at what the, what the pattern is and say, "Oh, yeah, a little bit of careful management might be able to work," honestly. And I have, and I think it's possible, maybe it's not probable, but it's possible.
Thank you.
And my comment is just, you see why I asked Member Bain to speak to this?
Because she knows all.
I know nothing.
Thank you.
The all-knowing, well-seeing Bain. Ordinance 12711 is, I'm sorry, yeah, hey Cathy?
This is just a minor thing I just want to point out for anybody who's sitting here looking at this, but on that page three, I think council members were left off the bottom of the pays.
I think the column just hit it up.
Column's shit in.
We eliminated our services.
Well, I think your pay is on there, it just doesn't say it.
What do you think, would you have it?
Just so anybody who's looking at that wants to know.
I think the column just hit up, hit up, and I noticed there was a print dying area that cut off, so I was going to mention.
The one that is important, the one that I saw.
It does happen, it is there. That's what I wanted to know.
Yes, there will be a city council next term, contrary to public demand. Any other comments there? Let's see, now we're on to 127, is that where we are? Ordinance 12711 is an ordinance adopting a fringe benefits package for non-union personnel within the City of Athens and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. Mr. Sands, did you want to do this one?
Sure, Mr. President, actually, this one is pretty easy. Member Bain mentioned that we removed longevity from the non-union personnel contract, they don't have a con, non-union personnel ordinance, and this is just an ordinance that has attached to it a benefits package, and the longevity part is crossed out. So that's the, that's the...
Just to the matter?
Just to the matter.
Other comments? Yes?
There were a few other changes for the title from personnel to human resources, and also the removal of any licensure play that has been folded into that position.
And the money was put into the...
Correct.
Other comments? On to 12811, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to extend the current contract to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, this ordinance just continues a contract that the city has had with the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau. There is, within the City of Athens, a hotel motel tax on each room that's rented, also called a transient tax, and this ordinance authorizes the Convention Visitors Bureau to receive back 35% of that collection, which this year is expected to yield somewhere in the neighborhood of $94,000.
More than that, but slight, excuse me? Slightly more.
Slightly more, okay.
In the, in the neighborhood of?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Member Nicely?
I'd just like to make a comment about this ordinance and the next one where we are renewing contracts, and having taken a look at them, I'd like to ask that we consider some, maybe... some maybe new ways of operating for the next year that aren't necessarily contingent on the renewal of the contract itself, but to take an opportunity to look at the scope of work and to ask for some additional reporting that clearly responds to the scope of work detailed outline. I noticed that, I think we're operating, if I'm looking at this right, we're operating with a scope of work that dates from two thousand and five, so I think this would be a good time to review it, and then to base reporting on the, as we work during the year, with reporting maybe mid-year, and then also probably sixty days before the end of the contract too, so it gives us time to kind of take a look back, and some forward-thinking opportunities too.
Very good. Other comments? Ordinance 129-11 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Economic Development Council and declaring an emergency. Sands?
Mr. President, this ordinance again authorizes a continuation of a contract that we have had with the Athens County Economic Development Council, and our support for them is, again, from the transient tax, the hotel motel collection, and we support them with thirty-five percent of that collection up to fifty-five thousand dollar cap. So in effect, that comes to the, they operate with that capped level, fifty-five thousand dollars. The transient tax has increased over the years, we have maintained the same level of support. And Member Nysli's comments would apply to this contract also. Thank you.
Other comments? Yes, Member Butler.
Thank you, sir. And maybe the mayor can remind us as well, too, and my understanding is that, again, we're only partially funding that office, that I think the university as well as the county?
University, county, the economic development council is almost like a subscription service, includes Hockin College, Nelsonville. The chamber is, I think, is dropped out because they've got their own things to do, but the concept is coordinate all the different entities to work together for economic development. And most important, of course, the university and the county be involved, so we don't cross-thread each other trying to compete for businesses. I think they've come to the position that we really should be developing a regional strategy, get a solid voice. As you know, the sands are shifting over at the Columbus state level with the jobs-for-Ohio structure. We need good representation down here, which means a single voice within the Athens County, but actually over the entire southeast Ohio region. So this is why we have to keep ourselves involved in this, where it comes down the pike, as well as growing the companies and businesses we have within the city. I think there are needs, and that's what we're trying to address by doing this. And again, the incentive, of course, is a percentage. There is an upper limit on this one, unlike the tourism bureau, which has no upper limit in terms of, the more tourism comes in, the more hotel motel tax is generated, the more incentive is for us to bring more activities in. And again, an ongoing conversation with Page and Todd Shelton, trying to keep us, you know, rolling right along here. I realize in a three-year contract we had last time, we had everything from GOBA to the bougie on the bricks that's been concentrated and building over time. So we've got activities that are going to fill our coffers, as we speak.
Member Butler.
Thank you, Mayor, for detailing that. Something, I agree with the comments of Member Nysli as well, and something I might add for Todd and his office and department is, again, accountability, since we're looking at public funds to the office, and perhaps reports more often than once a year would be beneficial as well to this body.
Todd will speak to you anytime you want.
Right, I'm aware of that.
He actually called up and said, should I be here? And he said he had a call, and I said, don't share.
Sure. Thank you.
Number Sands?
I just want to thank Member Butler for pointing out that the economic development council does have a variety of support. Convention and Visitors Bureau also has support from other entities. We, as the city, are not the be-all, end-all for either of these agencies.
There are good things going on with the convention bureau. I mean, there are conversations with the Athens Municipal Arts Commission and trying to link economic development with art and culture. It's interesting and exciting, since that's not my forte, how they're enthusiastic about this, and how they're actually discussing it on several levels that I didn't think were, you know, possible, I guess I should say. So we'll see what happens.
Member Nysli.
And I wasn't in any way meaning to be critical by my earlier comments, but I think when the city dispenses funds to an organization, we need enough information back so that we can report to other people when they ask us, where'd your money go? What did the organization do? So in the case of the economic development council, we've got a two-page description that talks about what they're doing in terms of marketing and development, retention and expansion committees, infrastructure partnerships, and those are the very kind of points that I think will help us to say, oh, and like some of Todd's earlier reports, when he did report to us monthly last year, and then for whatever reason, we haven't been getting those reports, but those are very kind of statistics of how many meetings did you have, how many businesses did you bring in? If the business wasn't successful, did the exit interview happen? And it's that detailed in the goals of this agreement that we have with them. So I think that'll be a good framework for reporting some of that additional information to us.
And thank you for stating more eloquently some of the thoughts I had.
Other comments? Before it becomes a committee.
Some of the other things he is involved in is the Community Improvement Corporation, Port Authority, coordinating with those entities as well. I found him a lot very useful for the yearly reporting of our TIF, as well as our CRAs, our community reinvestment areas. Some of the data that needs to be collected for that, he's actually in a better position to collect than I am, in particular, employment numbers on East State Street for the TIF. I mean, I guess I could knock on every door as mayor and say, how's your employment going? But this is one of the activities to make sure that we're following the rules for that. And in that sense, he's very helpful, as well as, I'd say, with CIC and Port Authority.
Moving on to ordinance 130-11, an ordinance authorizing a stop-loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency. Nancy, would you like to do one of these?
It is my second time in the last year that we've increased our stop-loss medical insurance, or changed our contract. I don't remember doing one much before this, but Claudia, the new personnel, now human resources person, has asked for this. It means that probably the contribution on the part of the employees will go down since it's pegged on their particular contribution to the administrative costs. One thing that probably we should mention, stop-loss insurance is familiar to those people who are doing work in, who work in self-insurance, which is what we have. We have insurance coverage with the city paying the cost, up to a hundred thousand now with this ordinance. It was eighty-five last time, and we raised it from sixty to eighty-five last year, and now we're up to a hundred thousand. And that means after one hundred thousand, if we have a really serious awful problem, we are covered by an insurance policy. And it's a fairly expensive policy, but it's worth it, because once you go over a hundred thousand, it's easy to hit, what, two hundred thousand, three hundred, and then pretty soon, you're at a million. And you know Affordable Health Act says there's no limit on the amount that you would be able to command, and I think many of us support that. But this is an increase in the amount that we say we'll cover, about fifteen thousand on the occasional use of this. It's very similar to what the university uses, we're both self-insured. Actually, I think the city had stop-loss before the university did, which is kind of funny, different, but it does help. It's like our backstop, and Claudia says she wants it to a hundred thousand, so we'll do it.
I think I was in my second term when the city had, well, two different kidney transplants.
Yeah.
And, boy, thank God, we had stop-loss insurance then.
Oh, yeah.
Other comments on ordinance 130? Ordinance 131-11, an ordinance adding an in-network deductible to the city of Athens health benefit plan for non-union employees and declaring an emergency. Remember Bain, that looks like Member Sands posted off.
I'm not sure about the numbers on this one. 131 is going to change the deductible for in-network people. Right now, it's a little bit higher than it is, and I keep having a sort of arm wrestle with Debbie about this. I thought it might want, we might want it in here, but it isn't, it seemed to be in here, the amounts, actual amounts, but I guess it's somewhere. I don't know where it is, but how much is it, Debbie? We changed it from being what to what? The in-network deductible. We reduced it for in-network, right? Do you remember?
We did reduce it for in-network.
Yeah, I don't have the table.
I know.
It was a hundred and fifty that was going to be the deductible, so now that...
It was in already, right?
A hundred and fifty is now applied to out-of-network deductible, and it's a hundred dollars for in-network. I think it went one, two, and three, but I'm trying to envision that.
Because we have single, double, and family, and so for the first time, we have both premiums, which are on administrative costs, and deductibles. And it's something I'm familiar with being on Medicare, because we have both of those also. So the numbers are relatively modest. Once you meet that, then you're sailing. Then the city's paying for it up to a hundred thousand. But actually, our insurance is...
And beyond.
And beyond, yeah. We have quite a nice insurance policy, it's very nice.
Other comments? Ordinance 132-11, this ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the US EPA to settle pending legal issues related to the closed Recra closure project and declaring an emergency. Who's doing this one?
Mr. President. Good, I'm sorry. Did you start? Okay.
We're going to be talking to Ray real quick here, so don't be worried. Ray, why don't you come on up?
Go ahead, sir.
Jim, you can do the lead-in, I guess?
No.
Okay. To explain this, we have our deputy auditor, Ray.
Yeah, Ray Hazel, deputy auditor, but tonight I'm really not addressing you as deputy auditor so much as it is sort of administrative historian on this Recra project.
And I thought that was my job.
I got involved in the Recra project in the mayor's office back in two thousand, early two thousand and two, shortly after the court decision had been made and the agreement reached on the Recra project, which was the alleged paint spills and so on at the city garage. Well, that part of the project finally reached a conclusion, it's been closed, and that's all been taken care of. The other part that was pending had to do with the city's financial responsibility requirements under the Recra program. We had to demonstrate that we had the wherewithal to pay for any damages to property or to individual health. So that process started at the same time as the original Recra issue, which is back in like the late eighties, early nineties, but it was a sort of a sidebar to the primary project. The city during that time was trying to ascertain just exactly what was required and what was necessary for them to meet the EPA requirements. So there were different alternatives, like bonds, or insurance, or financial assurance. You could demonstrate that you had the money available to meet those requirements. Well, the city started through a process of requesting clarification on what it is they needed to do, and that went on prior to the two thousand and one court decision. Well, then when the two thousand and one court decision came into place, the court said, okay, now you have to meet your financial responsibility, and you do this, and you close out your Recra project. Once again, there was a dialogue begun with the Ohio EPA as to what needed to be done. Well, the city was demonstrating, because we had the financial resources to do so, we were trying to demonstrate that we had financial capability without buying new insurance or purchasing really expensive bonds to cover what they called sudden or non-sudden liability occurrences. In other words, if anything went wrong during the Recra monitoring and closure process. Finally, and I got involved in the financial responsibility portion, other than working with the original Recra project, late in two thousand and seven, which is shortly before I moved over to the auditor's office, and we received some communication from the US EPA noting that we had not met the financial assurance requirements. At that point, things were kind of in the process of scurrying about, trying to decide what was going to be done, and there was a transition from the, well, Gary Hunter to Pat Lang as the new law director. So at some point, Pat and I conferred, and we got together with the O EPA to sit down face-to-face and try to figure out what it was that we were being asked to do, because every time a submission would be made, there would be, several months would go by, then we'd get a response that would say, well, you failed to meet subsection thirty-five, thirty-four, and it would go through this long dissertation of all these subsections and paragraphs that we had failed to, with which we failed to comply. So Pat and I went up, we sat down, said, what do we really have to do here? And we finally got to the point where what it boiled down to was, we had to literally take word for word the financial responsibility requirements from the Ohio Revised Code and the federal requirements, and put those on our letterhead, fill it in with our city information, provide copies of financial reports and some other information, put that all together as a package, and then submit that every year to the O EPA. So we went through the process, we made a submission, and finally, in two thousand and nine, we met the requirements. During this timeframe, we were noted that, we were then informed that we were going to be cited, and that we were going to have to pay substantial fines as a result of our failure to fully comply since two thousand and one. Pat was involved in that, and he managed a negotiation process with the US EPA, and basically, the original amount of money was quite substantial, but as a result of the discussion and negotiation process, and working with the US EPA, we ended up with the one hundred and twenty-two thousand some odd dollars, which is a lot of money, but it's substantially less than we spent in terms of like nine hundred thousand on the first phase, and another eight hundred thousand on the second phase of the Recra project itself, in legal fees and execution. So we avoided like another, probably another million dollars or whatever in litigation costs by handling it the way that the law director did. Let's kind of give you a perspective on why we ended up with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars when we've already got the Recra project taken care of.
If I could just add briefly to that, I remember when I was on city council in the nineteen nineties, and it was my first exposure to the EPA case, and I remember thinking then that I can't believe that litigation could be drawn out for, you know, ten years at that point, and of course, that's still the same issue that we're dealing with now. As Ray said, actually, my first week in office as law director, I remember my first conversation about the pending case, the Recra issues, and, you know, my jaw literally hit the floor when I saw the kind of money that was being talked about, and so Ray and I, and as he said, we immediately got together and said, we need to get to the bottom of this and figure out what needs to be done, because it was clear, just based on the number of violations, when the EPA cites you under this two thousand and one order... of violations, when the EPA cites you under this, under this 2001 order, the EPA's way of telling you, you know, hey, you didn't do this right, is they hit you with what's called a notice of violation, or an NOV. And in this case, the EPA filed these against the city twice in 2002, once in 2003, once in 2004, twice in 2006, and then once, the big one from the US EPA in 2007. So, it was clear that, you know, as Ray said, there was a back-and-forth going on, and the city never really addressed, you know, EPA's issues in a comprehensive way. I was shocked when Ray and I sat down, we went to Columbus, again, this is, you know, fairly early on in my involvement in the process, to meet with Ohio EPA, and to find out that there had never been such a meeting in all that time before. This is the first time anyone from the City of Athens has sought us out to sit down face-to-face to talk about some of these issues. And, you know, we went to, about a year later, as the negotiations were progressing, and went to Chicago to meet with the regional EPA administrator for the US EPA, and same thing, they were just, it was clear that the relationships had really deteriorated between the people that had been involved on both sides, and so, Ray, I really want to thank you for all of the tremendous work that you've put in on this, and I think one of the most important aspects of that was just helping to begin a real dialogue and to repair some of those relationships so that we could, so that we could engage in a process of negotiation, as opposed to getting to a point to where we would have had a complaint filed against us in front of an administrative law judge, which, you know, may have led to some very nasty consequences. So, I'm certainly pleased that we've reached a resolution on this, and that this should, by all accounts, be the final step, assuming that once we can get authorization and the US EPA signs off on this agreement, then, you know, yeah, a series of issues with the EPA going back to the late 1980s should finally be behind us, and we've got the dollar fee off of our water bills, and we can just all chill about our lives. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Briefly.
Thanks, Ray.
Yeah, thank you for your hard work, both entities.
Let's see, we're down to ordinance 13311, an ordinance approving the Athens-Hawking Solid Waste Management Plan. Member Bane knows that coming along.
This is, one plan looks like it's been on the table in the back. We fund under House Rule 592, recycling activities in solid waste districts, in this case, Hawking and Athens, with several different ways to pay. Our current way is 1-2-1 approach, in which we add a dollar to each ton of in-state, in-district garbage, $2 to in-state, out-of-district, and a $1 to out-of-state district because of interstate commerce. It's a very low amount of money, somewhere around $100,000. I don't know how you can do much with that when you have a two-district setup, and so, this plan, in addition to proposing in the future, MRF, maybe not a dirty MRF, but a MRF, also has a generation fee, and there is the problem, that we've already voted for twice, we all know-
That's a wet of mark, please.
Uh-oh, a dirty MRF. Materials recovery facility, they need the paper, they know.
Okay.
All right, I, yeah, we're going to, this is what is going to happen, as I see it. Let the mayor come back, and he can backstop me on this one, because he's been going to more meetings than I have. Thank goodness. The current amount of money will stay on, we might raise it in the future, those charges that were initially put on were once enough, now aren't enough to cover what has to happen. We have recycling bills, we do really well in the city, but the county has lagged behind a bit, so now we have out-of-the-city district collections, Kilvert is one, there are a couple others, where Lawville's another, so they're collecting recycling out there. It's not, the $100,000 we make a year won't cover that at all. But the main thing is, the generation fee, a charge on tonnage, that would amount probably to $3 per family per year, and you would think that it's millions of dollars, the way people talk. It's been very contentious. I'm going to let Paul take over in about a second, because the $3 generation fee was hotly contested and discussed, and I was disgusted sometimes, where people were suggesting that they were using fees from recycling to pay for garbage collection in the City of Athens. Clearly did not understand what's going on. After a year, but they did come around, didn't they? All members, we all, we all voted to do this plan, which has a materials recovery facility potentially for those areas that don't have curbside, maybe some that do, and it's a very minimal plan, but the $3, the $3 charge is really contentious, and it's for each ton, and if you think of yourself as producing about a ton, the charge isn't going to be that much. If you're producing 11 a ton, you need to start recycling, but it's minimal. But there's been a lot of talk, a lot of hype, a lot of disinformation, but we passed it as a committee. I'm the citizen rep, the mayor's really the city's rep, and I'm going to turn it over to him in about a second with the permission of the president of council.
I'm for Mayor Wile.
This is the solid waste plan, management plan, is a plan that we have to update every five years. This round has to be submitted, I think, in March, I believe, of next year. There's a 90-day ratification window that's being processed. You're part of the ratification, it's the number, largest municipality in the two, in Athens County. It requires participation of the largest municipality in Hawking County as well, and there's a rub. We have, we also need 6% of populations in general, but we need to sign on to both cities and the townships. Again, part of the benchmarks that exist right now is that 90% of the population has to have access to recyclable, place to recycle. That's why you have roll-offs at various places like Kilvert, like Lawville, Amesville. Once a month, they put one in there for about half-day, so you can participate. It's really a formula. It does not really reflect the actual recycling that goes on. This is a mandate from the EPA to reduce our solid waste, going into landfills and recycle more. The next benchmark in the next five years will be a percentage, 25%. The attempt is to get 25% of your trash to be recycled. In the city, we do that for the residential. The way I, if you read the tone there that she's gotten, and she has said she'll leave it on the desk for you to read if you need to, it's actually a PDF file, should be on our city website right now. If I remember correctly, industry-wise, it's about 61 or 62% for the waste district, this is the two-county waste district, but there's still a little industry that when you add our 25% and 60% to the industry, we're about 9% recycling within the both counties. So, eventually, we'll have to do an uptick of how much we do recycling. To increase capacity, we may have to get to a MRF, Materials, what is it, Recovery Center Facility. We need to fund that. They were talking about maybe a $2 million process. The alternative, of course, is to actually job it out entirely, which means we lose control of, we lose jobs, local jobs, we also lose control of the finances too, because we get the mercy of any company that comes in. There is, of course, the, there's confusion of what the district is versus the nonprofit that actually collects our garbage and does recycling for the city. And as I say, it's pretty contentious, we've approved this before, mostly with the generation fee, $3 generation fee. Actually, if you, there's a website out there of association of solid waste districts. You can always go on there, and they have a chart that shows you all the fees that are associated with other districts out there. We are probably, we are on the low end. I think we're about pretty much the minimum in terms of the $1, $2, $1. In terms of generation fee, we do not have any, some do, some don't. A lot of it depends on whether they have a landfill in their district or not. Quite more do you want to know? I say, I can answer any question otherwise. What? Well, it is important to me. It's important to where we, you know, otherwise, we're waiting on stuff in 100 years, or trying to dig it out and mine it. There is actually a group that's looking at zero waste, the concept of zero waste within the district. I try to wrap my head around that. I mean, in, in, and I, in an ideal, perfect world, you could be ready to recycle everything, and you probably can, the question is where, you know, to what, you know, egg, every egg shell or whatever, you know, I mean, that's something to strive for, because again, well, our landfill is quite adequate. We've got, I think, 70 years, is it, 79?
Mr. Kilbarger does.
Mr. Kilbarger does, if he can maintain his-
Which is different from us.
But realize, that is not the way to go. You have to remember, it's up in Nelsville, it is upriver from us, like everything else that we worry about. So, the fact is, it behooves us to have a good plan in place. We have to actually, like any good plan, it requires some financing, and that's, again, is why we'll ratify the plan with the $3 generation fee, which is nominal for a family, an average family. It's probably costly to many of the waste, the haulers. We are the number-one waste generator in the two counties. The second one after that is Ohio University, just so you know. So, we are, we may have, it's run by the county commissioners, both county, sets of county commissioners, but we have, we have a part to play in this, one way or the other.
Other comments? Member Butler.
Thank you. This may be also apropos for future discussions and committee meeting, but is it something, perhaps, the mayor, if you have an opinion on this, that we should consider maybe incentivizing smaller or lower rates for people that, sort of a reward for people who are mindful of recycling more and producing less waste? Is that something that we could consider as a city, or have you ever-
These are actually, our lower rates are fairly low compared to other cities, so when you say lower, there's a baseline that you get to, and the way it's shaping up right now, if this plant crashes, burns, you're going to see higher rates. Guaranteed, you're going to see a lot higher rates, because we'll have to contract out or we have to take it over ourselves, and there'll be a cost associated with that. Or we'll have the EPA draw a plan, because that's the next thing. If this plan isn't ratified by the two counties, the EPA comes on and does it for us, and A, they'll charge us for it, too.
We've had a little experience with that. Other comments?
Yeah, one more, yeah, and one more, just kind of perspective, I mean, we're probably paying, if you go to the landfill with a packer truck, about $360 to tip it, and we won't even fill up a packer truck in the residential areas any given day, but over time, and of that, we've got a big chunk that is going to ODNR now, and now we have $1 that's going to Athens-Hawking Recycling, to generate recycling. In other words, the amount that is charged is relatively modest, and the amount that is, that is, that goes to the county, to county district is very small, and it's supposed to go up. Now, if you were, well, anyway, you can, you can do the math, but a 10, 12-ton packer truck, it isn't going to be that much for individuals over time.
We do have an incentive program in place for a single, one single 30-gallon trashcan per week can result in half the cost of the trash hall. You do have to, if you do that, then your plan, you're never going to put out any more than that in terms of, so we do have a little incentive already out there.
Well, we do. I mean, basically, we have 1, 2, 3 trashcan sizes, as well as the tickets out, if you're an occasional, have to go over that amount. So, you're talking about trying to lean it back even further, and I don't know if that's possible, too.
Today's morning.
And again, I fully expect the rates to go up as we need to either build a MRF or the cost of transporting the stuff. Again, a lot of the conversation today at the solid waste district meeting was that they haven't changed rates since 2008, so it's overdue for some of their rates to increase along the way, just to make ends meet. I don't know what else to tell you. Again, we're talking about recycling as well as garbage, there's a little bit of, it's always intermingled, but the fact is that trying to finance the recycle part is the hard part, and the garbage side is not that kind of a star.
I think EPA doesn't really give us much credit either, because we are the only place in this state that's recycling, thank God, brown grass, because that's our biggest, I don't understand why and where it comes from, but those beer bottles, and we actually are not very in love with it. We think we'd get a star on our forehead, but it's not going to, I mean, we're not adverse to it, I'm just commenting that we've been able to do some pretty substantial things with the way it's worked. But be prepared, it's going to change.
Further comments? Moving on to ordinance 13411, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into an LPA federal-local LET project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation ODOT for the OXPO Bridge, project number 247, and declaring an emergency. Member Niceley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you talk briefly about some of the details of the OXPO rehabilitation of that bridge that was, crosses the old riverbed, the bridge built in 1932? This is the agreement, as mentioned in the title, the local LET project agreement, and we have to have this agreement in place between the City of Athens and Ohio Department of Transportation, or we can file the construction documents with the Federal Highway Administration, so in order to get our federal authorization for these funds. So, this is one of the necessary paperwork pieces that we need for that large project.
Other comments? Ordnance 13511, it's an ordinance authorizing construction engineering and construction of the OXPO Bridge, again, project number 247, and declaring that emergency, and again, Member Niceley.
And this next piece of legislation authorizes the service safety director to advertise and accept bids and enter into the contracts for the construction, engineering, and construction and materials testing and other costs with OXPO. A very brief summary, and that is contained in the text of the ordinance. The total cost of the project is $3.844 million. We're paying for this in a number of ways. The large share is from the Ohio Department of Transportation, that's $2.498 million. We have cost share from Ohio University to help redo the utilities that are located under the bridge, so they will be contributing $411,600. Of the remaining costs, then, they will come from city funds, and they are detailed in the very bottom of the page of that ordinance, that will be taking $664,500 from the Street Rehab Fund, that's Fund 572, we're taking $19,502 from Street Fund 220, and I think that's, and $3 million, yes, from the Small Cities Grant Fund.
Other comments on ordinance 135? Thank you. Ordnance 13611, it's an ordinance establishing a debt and fund balance policy for the City of Athens, this is introduced by all members of council. Speaking to it, I believe, will be City Treasurer, Mary Ann McClure.
Thank you, Mr. President. This policy was presented at committee a few weeks ago, and after several questions were asked and discussions with some council members, we revised some of the ranges of the dollars and percents to allow more flexibility in the goal of our end-of-the-year fund carryover, and softened some of the language, and we are presenting it as revised for Council of
Other comments? Member Bane.
I'd like to thank Mary Ann and Kathy for making adjustments, appreciate that.
One more.
Especially Mary Ann, I wish she must have said it. Thank you. I'm not sure.
Under ordinance 13-
I'm sorry, Member Gossman. We're far behind Member Sam. He's just so close. Tell me.
Again, thanks for revising the language on this. It looks like it would be, at least the appearance from what I read, is that this would be much easier for us to handle. Just thinking, thinking about it, when the language is shale instead of should or something of that nature.
The intent is to be a tool, not-
Right, sort of a guideline.
Yes.
So, the undesignated fund balance goal, the minimum would be seven and a half, seven and a half percent. We wouldn't meet that this year, would we?
I think we will.
Okay. Well, that's, that's what my question was.
We'll be very close.
It's over 10?
Previous years, it came really close to-
Oh, I was thinking it's over 10 this year.
It's very over, it looks like.
That's why, I think we'll meet the seven and a half, we're not going to-
Yes, we expected-
We should, yeah, we should be at least a 10.
We expected it to be over 10, but we won't really know until December 29th, so, but we expect it to be over.
I just looked at previous years, and it was real close to that.
Right.
Yeah, we have had a couple of years.
Happy to hear that it will be. Thanks.
Member Sam.
Quickly, this is basically talking about what we have talked about in vegetarian language. Quickly, this is basically talking about what we have talked about in budgetary language. It's our carryover, which is something that we've always struggled to make it as healthy and as strong as possible.
The general.
And this is just, this was suggested strongly to us by the state auditors that we have a policy that we will gauge our carryovers to be at least seven and a half percent of the budget, up to 15% of the budget terms. And so that's where that is.
It supports what practice has been for some time. That you all have had the goal of budgetary overs, but it's not been in writing before.
Now we've caught a fight. Other comments?
Well, we are.
Under ordinance 137-11, an ordinance suggesting the existing ward boundaries from the City of Athens in accordance with 2010 federal census and declaring an emergency. This also has been introduced by all members of council who wishes to speak for it. Member Paul, I think they're phoning the two.
Thank you.
They all took one step back, and there you are.
I guess. According to federal law, we have to adjust our ward boundaries according to the federal census. And as we all know, according to the newspapers, the state has done this, and with the House members, we have, the state has done this also. The planner with, help with, from Elgard has produced maps, and we have looked at the maps according to the census, and we have decided on the map number four, scenario number four, which will be available in the council office on the back table.
It is there now.
It's there now. So people can look at it. And one of the things that we really looked at was trying to keep the ward lines fairly cohesive with what people recognize now. So people aren't changing radically with their different wards and such. And it evens out the population between all the different wards. This, when you voted last year, the wards were different. Like, I had the lost population. I had the little baby ward, and other people had bigger wards. It's much more evenly spaced with the population throughout the city. So that's what the map will show.
And we did try to do the kind of creative approach.
We are not gerrymandering. There's no long tails. I think people will look and say, how did it change? It doesn't radically change, I think, with the different wards. We do not...
The Republicans have nothing to do with divided it.
That's right. We have not gerrymandered. Yes. We are not a gerrymander city. That's what I'm saying.
Member Bain. Stop me before I go on.
So sure, Ward is done. I know that my, the person who's following me, Michelle, was concerned about the downtown area. And one of the things that I think many people do not know, and I'll just say it right now, about one-tenth of our population lives in a very small area in the Grand Canyon. And you don't want to, you know, I mean, we've already talked about intensifying that area, and so it's kind of natural for it to be divided up until such time as we achieve 25,000, and then you can start there.
What I find interesting about it, after being on the Board of Elections, is knowing that this is being done by population self and has nothing to do with the voting patterns. So, you know, to remind people again that the Board of Elections sets up the precincts and does that on voting patterns, the city council has the authority to set up wards. So it's a bit of a challenge, and I think I've seen it happen now three times. And...
It's kind of systematic.
And everybody basically throws up their hands after trying to figure out the best way to do it and makes the smallest changes possible. And I think, again, that's what happened this time, which I'm not too sure that is the best. I see hands down here also.
I think it's just the making of an distinction that this up four does give a cleaner line, a more even division for the precincts.
Right. Other comments?
Yes, member Sam. We have mentioned with regard to several other actions, individuals, and I, Paul Loeb, our city planner, has spent an amazing inordinate amount of time on this and has been very responsive to the concerns of council members and other citizens.
Yeah. I think you're good thoughts. Other comments? Ordinance 138-11, it's an ordinance amending the 2011 appropriation ordinance. Member Cool.
Mr. President, section one of this ordinance decreases and increases the following: decreasing internal service fund 865 TC 200, 300 by $20,000 and increasing TC 500 by $20,000 to purchase a vehicle mobile column lift for the service garage; decreasing wheel tax fund 226 TC 500 by $69,600 and increasing Street Fund 220 TC 500 by $69,600 in order to balance year-end certified resources for the Grosvenor Street Slip Project; and decreasing transportation assistance fund 214 TC 500 by $30,000 and increasing transportation assistance fund 214 TC 200, 300 by $20,000 and decreasing and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. Section two of this ordinance appropriates the sum of $15,000 to general fund fire 101.205 TC 500 vehicle replacement. This is regarding the old Jeep that the fire department's been using, the 1994 Jeep Cherokee. The transmission went out of it, and it's, they do have it sort of limping along now. But this would authorize them to purchase a used vehicle for the sum of $15,000 and, which may be a 2008 Blazer.
Ordinance 139-11, an ordinance amending ordinance 091-11 authorizing construction of the Carriage Hill Bridge Rehabilitation, project number 261, and declaring an emergency. Member Bain.
Mr. President, 139-11, as you can see, increases Carriage Hill authorized amounts. Unappropriated balance is the source of the funds in the street rehabilitation. So the total appropriation is increased by $10,000. And the expenditure is authorized in section two. Do we need to suspend the rules on this?
Tonight, no. Primarily, and this was just kind of thrown at number Bain today.
Yeah, I caught it.
That there's a change order that was pending that's going to come forth, and we'd like to just put it all in this budget. When they went to remove the jacket, collapsed, which kind of speaks to the critical nature of having to replace that bridge in the first place. So we had to put in some temporary pavement. That's not cheap. And so this will allow enough to cover the change order and anything else that should occur as we finalize that project.
Ouch. Other comments? Announcements and other business? We do have a request from a council member asking that we have a city council meeting this coming Wednesday at noon. Basically, all we need is a quorum to read all ordinances from, that are presented tonight as first reading, to get them through second reading, and then I would anticipate, bearing any unforeseen emergency, which there may be, that the final meeting of council would be on December 12th this year, for this year, for this term, when all of the second reading ordinances would come up, the third reading a week from tonight. Do we have sentiment for that?
I wasn't confident.
I am not seeing anybody shake their head no.
I'm not sure.
You're not sure you can be here?
I'm not sure I can be here.
Okay.
I'm relatively sure I won't be here.
Okay.
But I think it's a good idea.
We still have four people, unless I'm seeing some other people say that they cannot. And I hope to be able to be here, but we are not looking for...
Can you buy lunch?
A pie breaking a bone.
We'll buy one.
I'll cook.
Oh, my God.
No, I'm not here.
Just sit here.
Go.
Yes.
Just want to make sure. I have another announcement if you're through discussing that.
We'll give you an opportunity.
Thank you.
You ought to cook that.
Thank you.
See you out your hat. If you have the floor.
Thank you, President. I just wanted to remind everybody, in case they didn't see the announcement in the paper, that the city is holding its fifth annual food drive, started last week on Thursday. Bins are available in City Hall, right inside the door, at the community center, and at the code office down current drive. And that will end on December 16th. And so we would appreciate any donations. Thank you.
With the food, in clarification, with the food going to...
The Salvation Army.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Other announcements or any other business? Seeing none, last item on our agenda is an opportunity for citizens to speak on any legislative items or city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak before council? You've heard us speak enough.
Nope.
Ladies, please come forward. Rules provide that you state your name and address, and you're allowed to speak for three minutes.
Okay. Christine Hughes, 69 Grosvenor Street, Athens. I know that this is city council, and so you have limited jurisdiction over what happens outside of city limits, but I know you've taken steps to address the impacts of the hydraulic fracturing that's going to begin starting pretty soon in the county. I don't know if you're aware of the lease signing that's going on this week. Looks like about a third of Athens County is being signed up to do some of this new kind of oil and gas drilling. So I guess I want to encourage you to become an educational resource for people and possibly think of ways that we can monitor the impact that this drilling will have, if we can have water samples, air samples before the fracking begins. That'd be one step to take. The, I know that the volatile organic compounds are multiple in fracking chemicals, and so if we, this can get into our aquifers. I have this thing here from the, actually, I don't know where it's from, but it's, talks about how our aquifers are susceptible to VOCs. So you may have to do special pre-testing for that. And when you get into the water testing and air testing, have a list of the chemicals that have been identified in hydraulic fracturing. These are just the ones that they've been able to track down, since they don't have to disclose what goes into the, into the ground and then also into the air. So that might be a useful thing. This is from the United States House of Representatives Committee of Energy and Commerce. There's also a public presentation this Wednesday that I invite you all to go to. This is by Paul Fiesel and also Jen Bowman, a local person. But Paul Fiesel is from Carroll County. His county has been 95% leased, and so he's just sort of holding his own there and trying to educate people in other communities. So I have that here for you. It's on Wednesday, December 7th, 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. at Athens High School cafeteria. All the things that you've discussed today previously are going to be affected by this. If you want to start doing some economic impact forecasts perhaps, because the, the local food economy is going to be completely changed, maybe eliminated. We have organic farmers that are being forced to sign because they can't see another way out. The tourism economy, obviously, is going to be impacted. Who wants to visit an industrialized zone? And this is an environmental justice issue. Outside companies are impacting the low-income population. I think we're the poorest county in the state, or close to it. Also, we have the worst air quality in the country, in Ohio. So a lot of things to think about. I, I don't know what you guys can do. I just want to take this opportunity to urge you to do what you can. And if you want to appoint somebody to be the person that people in the community come to, because it seems that we're being told there's nothing we can do at the city level, then the county, I'm not sure what they can do. I'm going to talk to them tomorrow, the county commissioners. Obviously, at the state level, we've been shut out. So I don't know. If you can cheer me up or tell me that we have a little more control over our future, but I don't see much opportunity, except for education and helping each other out to get through this. But it's coming, it's here. Thanks.
Thank you. Lorraine.
Do you announce, Christine?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Lorraine McCosker, 59 Elmwood in Athens. So I am calling on you as citizens and as representatives of our community that this is indeed a state of emergency, or we could say city of emergency. When the city was threatened by drilling in the aquifer and the Hocking River by the Bureau of Land Management and the Wayne National Forest, you folks wrote a letter, as well as the mayor, the president of Ohio University, as well as the county commissioners. Well, now we have a similar situation, but it's within our county. On recent days, thousands of acres have been leased. It's considered that one-third will be leased by just one company, Cunningham, by tomorrow evening, if not more. Tonight, there was indeed another leasing event at the Athens Mall where a Pennsylvania-based law firm was signing landowners in Rome Township. So I had spoken directly with people. They had not received a copy of that lease as of Saturday afternoon, so they were going to have to read it and analyze it within that time period and sign. There's some kind of really deep challenge to sign up as quickly as possible, and I think many adjacent landowners are feeling very compelled that they must sign as well, that they won't be covered, their liability of the impacts to their water. And then, indeed, we have previously owned gas land, land at subsurface rights that were previously owned, and that will be subject to hydraulic fracturing, as well as lands that are being sold online and by real estate companies. So I estimate that at least two-thirds of our county will probably be leased by the end of this week. And as Christine said, 95% greater than that is leased in Carroll County. A few shortcomings on these leases. There's no regulation as to where the water can be extracted from. As you know, each well takes between 2 and 8 million gallons of water. So the Lavelle-Cunningham lease that was being generated last week stated that you could not extract water from the surface rights of that particular landowner. Where will that water be taken from? Likely the Hocking River or other, other areas. This same lease does not limit to what strata the gas can be extracted or oil. So they can go back and extract from that same well into different strata. Does not put any regulations on it. And then there's no protections at the state level of the water that can be impacted by this process. So Ohio Department of Health and ODNR, it's the responsibility of that landowner or the adjacent landowner. What if you are an organic farmer that's surrounded by leasing and you're worried about your water system? So with these leases, we're putting ourself, our community, our city, at risk. And I would like to suggest that the city take this very, very seriously and come up with the following. I just threw out these suggestions. I'm requesting that you have discussions with the county, the township trustees, as well as the county commissioners, the county engineer, and the impacts to the roads, as well as the dumping of brine or whatever contaminants they're allowed to. Athens County Health Department does not seem to have a policy in place as to water testing. And I've talked with them there, and there are certain levels of water testing and at certain costs. So we want to not only look for conductivity and other aspects... and at certain costs, so we want to not only look for conductivity and other aspects of water contamination, but actually look at the chemicals. And what guidelines will our city follow with testing chemicals that are going to come into our water system? So, we need to have a policy in place as to test that water system. And finally, there's the problem of, this is certainly not comprehensive, but of injection wells. In our state, we accept, or we inject 133,000 barrels of contaminated material per day. In Ohio, because of the commerce clause, we accept it, and we inject it, and we are now, they're now permitting further injection wells, they're called saltwater injection wells, but indeed, they take anything that's related to the oil and gas industry. Most recently, last week, Troy Township is to receive a saltwater injection well, so I'm not sure how many we have in this county alone, but where does that go, and what are the long-term impacts of that? So, I hope that, I hope that you really realize this is indeed a state of emergency, and the community is really at odds with this. We're feeling very threatened, and we feel like there are no regulations in place that will protect, you know, what we've worked hard to create here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Is there anyone else wishing to speak before council this evening? Seeing none, and having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.